I'm so glad you're here. We have two quick hearings, uh, two quick meetings first. We'll go through those and then we'll start with our, our, uh, regular one. So we'll start with our special meeting of Eagle Mountain Community Facilities Board. A roll call, please.
Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Sharno?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember LaCron?
Present.
And Councilmember Spelitch?
Present.
Thank you. Is this Grady?
Yes, if I'm following the meeting correctly, um, we're talking about the Cottonwoods Maintenance District first. So, um, before you, Mayor and Council, um, we don't have a formal presentation.
We have Eagle, Eagle Mountain first.
Oh, it's in the wrong order on my screen. I apologize.
Okay.
Okay, um, Mayor and Council, before you is, um, the budget for next year for Eagle Mountain, um, Community Facilities District. The Community Facilities District was formed nearly 20 years ago for the purpose of, uh, putting in public infrastructure in the community of Eagle Mountain. Um, it should be expiring, um, and paid off all the debt service, um, in another, uh, year. Um, and actually, the total amount before you tonight is a total of $413,282. Uh, with that, staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Is there any speaker cards on this? No?
No.
Uh, any discussion or a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's, uh, uh, seven to nothing. I'm assuming that art was on there. Uh, so we will adjourn that. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. So we're adjourned with that and we'll move on now to Cottonwood. Um, I guess we have to take a roll call again, please.
Sure. Um, Mayor Dickey?
Uh, here.
Vice Mayor Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Sharno?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember LaCron?
Present.
And Councilmember Spelitch?
Present.
Thank you. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Several years ago, the, the neighborhood in the Cottonwoods area of town, um, requested, um, improvements, um, just outside their neighborhood. Primarily landscaping and, um, a, a paint, a painted stuccoed wall that is outside their, um, their wall. Um, the item before you is their annual budget. It's, it's approximately $6,642. This is assessed to all the property owners that live in the Cottonwoods, um, Maintenance District. With that, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff recommends approval of this item before you.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards on this?
No.
Thank you. Any comments or a motion?
Move approval is written.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Please, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you so much. Uh, move to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All, obsofs, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a rush? Aye. Thank you. We're adjourned and we will start our regular, um, meeting. Um, call to order. Uh, sorry, I guess I need to do this again. I will call to order the meeting, our regular meeting. Would you please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you all. A roll call, please.
Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Sharno?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine? Councilmember LaCron?
Present.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Present.
Thank you so much. Um, reports by Mayor, Councilmembers, and Town Manager. Um, Town Manager, I believe you have something?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council, before you tonight, I wanted to introduce you, um, to formerly, um, James Smith, our new Economic Development Director. Um, he's gonna come up to the podium and, um, we're very lucky. He just started yesterday and, uh, we were able to, um, steal him away from the city of Chandler. Um, James has, uh, quite a bit of experience in, in economic development and, um, has worked in Chandler for a number of years. I'll go ahead and have James, uh, say a few words. Um, you wanna just share a little bit about your background and where you've worked over the last, um, quarter century?
Absolutely. Thank you, City Manager. Mayor and Council, it's an honor to be before you tonight. Um, as, uh, as the City Manager alluded to, I have been with the city of Chandler for about the last 13 years. It's afforded me the opportunity to work on a number of different types of projects. I started out, my background was more on the retail side, worked on hotels, a conference center, redevelopment of aging retail and trying to fill aging retail, um, moved into more in the, the office industrial side, was part of, uh, many of the latest announcements that Chandler has seen with Allstate and Voya, uh, representing thousands of jobs. Uh, so, um, think that I, uh, bring a lot of experience and I'm, uh, I'm just honored to be here. Uh, love the community, um, beautiful place. I've found that people are very proud to be here and I see why. And so, uh, I'm honored to be here and just, uh, look forward to getting to know all of you and working with all of you.
Thanks, James. I appreciate it. Um, so this is your first introduction to James. Um, he and I are gonna be meeting with you. We're gonna have, um, one-on-one appointments with each of you, um, in the weeks ahead. And also, um, we have some, um, workshops planned so that we can kind of follow up on that, um, retail strategies, um, that you wanted some additional background information. And he's in the process now of starting to do an update to the Economic Development Plan. So you'll hear a lot more on this topic, um, in, in the months ahead. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other, uh, items to talk about, Grady?
Um, I do. Um, I wanted to call up our Community Services Director, Rachel Goodwin. Um, she's gonna report back on a couple items. The first one is the, um, 30th anniversary of her incorporation and 50th anniversary of the fountain.
All right. Thank you, Grady. Um, I am here tonight to remind us that it is almost time to celebrate. Uh, just as Grady mentioned, this December, December 2019, will mark 30 years of incorporation as a town. And next December, December 2020, will commemorate 50 years of our fountain. Um, so, in looking ahead for the next year, kicking off this December, next December, um, we've begun to assemble as a group, uh, with town staff and many, many residents have come together to begin this planning process. So I'm here, uh, tonight as a representative of that group to solicit your support for this upcoming celebration. Um, we've had two public input sessions. We've had more than 30 folks signed up to participate with us, um, and, and more are coming in as is, as recent as, uh, before, right before this meeting. We do still have a bit of work to do. We have a number of chairs to assign, uh, including a overall committee chair.
[laughing]
Hint, hint. Um, but we are, uh, working diligently. We have a number of things to do over the summer, so continue to watch for planning announcements. Um, we have a design concept underway for our logo. Um, so you will start to see things being rolled out, um, and probably as early as this fall. Um, so I am here to just give you that quick update and to, again, solicit your support for the celebration of our town.
And then we have one other item, if you don't mind, Mayor. Um, while Rachel's up here, um, you recall back at the time we had our council retreat, there was some discussion regarding the, um, town's public art program. And so, um, Rachel's gonna give an update as to where we are with that and what you can expect in the near future.
Yes. So, um, this spring, the Public Art Committee, uh, changed leadership. Um, they have changed, um, chairs. And as part of that leadership change, they undertook the effort of updating a number of their guidelines and procedures. Um, what this did is it really highlighted a need to update our overall policies, um, and our master plan of our public art, um, and bring it in line with our current needs for our collection. Um, in so doing, we aren't ready to do that this, this, uh, the spring. We need the summer to really get that process, um, underway and bring back to you a complete, um, recommendation for these updated policies. Um, what that means is that we will be working with, um, a, uh, an art historian and preservationist to help us draft those so that we are, again, in line with, um, current standards and, uh, making sure that we are caring for the collection that we have. So what that means is we would like to work that over the summer and then bring this back to you this fall for your review.
Yes, Councilman.
She knew I'd have questions.
I saw you up there.
[laughing]
Rachel, um, we have, what, 140, 150 sculptures in town?
We do.
Uh, some of us have talked about whether or not we need any more. Um, will you be addressing that issue, number one? Number two, uh, there's been discussion about what kinds of sculptures. First editions, copies, that kind of thing.
Mm-hmm.
We have to pay to clean everything. We have to pay for insurance. All of that on the agenda.
Ideally, yes. We would like to tackle this as a, as a far-reaching discussion. That is why we do need to have some time this summer to really get our arms around it because the policy really needs to not only guide what we have and the maintenance of what we have, but the future of the collection and where we're going to go with that. So yes, a number of recommendations will be brought forward. There, I expect, uh, quite a bit of discussion and direction from Council at that time.
Yeah, and that's not meant as any kind of criticism. I think we have probably more sculptures per, uh, per citizen than any town in America.
Maybe.
And, oh, we're sure, we're sure getting there. And, uh, I know that people come into town sometimes just to see those sculptures, so.
They do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions for Rachel? Just about the 30-50, um, I hope that the council and everyone here will, um, participate one way or another. I think it'll just be kinda likened to what we did with the Centennial, where we updated the council and we let them know what was going on. And it was just a really nice year. And so I hope that we can recapture some of that. And I really appreciate all the work that Rachel's already done and, I know, more to come, but hopefully fun.
All right.
Thank you so much. Does Council have, um, reports of your activities over the last, uh, couple of weeks or so? Any meetings or anything? Oh, you always leave it to me, sorry. I'll, I'll talk fast. So of course, we had the graduation Fountain Hills High School graduated on the 24th of May. And I just wanted to congratulate all schools and all grades, um, all the ages, eighth grade and kindergarten and everything. It's very nice. Um, I was able to go with Maricopa Association of Governments for a really quick two-day, uh, trip to Calgary. Um, when I get my act together, I'll, I'll put together a report, but there's so much, uh, I have a lot to talk to our new Economic Development Director about. There, there were a lot of opportunities and it was really, really great. Um, the, the legislature signed it on 5/28. Uh, just really quick, the league, they followed these things that affect us as a city. So they, uh, did a great summary for us. They, um, said that, uh, there will be some increase in infrastructure investments. They didn't sweep our HERF funds this, this year, which are, go to highways and roads. Um, they are providing more funds for school resource officers. Um, they're gonna implement Wayfair. We talked a lot about this over the, over the, uh, course of the session, which will permit taxation of retail transactions online in the same manner as brick and mortar stores. Um, they also defeated a bill for the second time that would have exempted many online transactions from sales tax. And that would have affected a lot of the cities. The session saw the passage of the new hands-free statute. And we'll be talking a little bit about that, uh, incorporating that with our, um, text, texting, no texting ban that we already have in Fountain Hills. Um, other bills that didn't pass that would have affected us had preempted all local ordinances regarding landlord-tenant laws. Um, it would have eliminated local regulations regarding the sale and consumption of tobacco and vaping, which we took to heart because we had just won from the last council, had, um, made the, made some parts of the parks, um, smoke-free. And this, um, put that in jeopardy. So that was good that that didn't go. Um, other bills that would have required municipal judges to stand retention, to be elected, um, those didn't go. Um, some tools that did, uh, pass, which we're gonna talk about a little bit later, was, um, a little bit of relief on short-term rentals, um, what we kinda think of as party houses. They added $225 million to infrastructure projects and $18 million for city and town road projects. Um, I wanted to thank, we'd, we'd have some legislators that helped us out. And of course, um, Representative Kavanaugh actually sponsored our bill, which was the short-term rental bill, um, that we'll be incorporating. And, um, I wanted to thank also Erin and Grady because they were really, um, following all these things as, um, you know, I used to do that for my job, so I was able to do that too. But, um, there was a lot going on. Another thing that's happening now is the FAA, um, has been, uh, looking at new flight paths. And we thought we were kind of in the clear, but now there are some proposals that are affecting us. So, uh, we wrote a, a pretty good letter about that. We'll have to keep our eye on that. Um, one of the plans i- isn't looking too, uh, awesome for Fountain Hills, so we really have to keep our eye on that. Um, we will be, so next week, I mean, our next meeting, we're not gonna have the discussion about, um, revenue enhancement. We are going to be having a public hearing and voting on the, uh, sales tax, potential sales tax increase, potential public safety fee on August 13th. This is to ensure that we legally, fully noticed when we're gonna be talking about it. And of course, gives everybody an a, ample opportunity to have public awareness. Um, last, we had wonderful Memorial Day, uh, Monday, very nice ceremony and wonderfully cool. Wish if you were there, you saw how that went. And, uh, really appreciated, uh, that program that morning. So, I don't know if anything I said sparked anything. Yes, sir?
Yeah, it sparked, uh, the fact that I wanted to comment on, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilman Spellick and I, and there may have been others, but it was a big crowd, attended that, uh, World War II Memorial Day service. And I just wanna say that it was a very emotional time. Um, and it, it was a good crowd. Uh, I hope next year it'll be even better. Um, it's something that we really need to pay attention to. And I appreciated the fact that so much time and effort went into putting it together.
Thank you. So next is our call to the public. Do we have, um, any speaker cards for call to the public?
Yes, we have two.
Okay.
Um, the first one is representing five people and that's Jan Parisian.
Hi. I'm back.
[laughing]
Um, I wanna follow up on the last meeting when we talked about the traffic issues on El Lago. And now I'm referring to the length of El Lago from Palisades to Fountain Hills Boulevard, 'cause I've talked to more people. Um, regarding El Lago being classified as a collector's street and not a residential street, we want our street as a residential street by fact of it being in a residential neighborhood. The residents' needs should have priority in how you fix the speeding problem. We want changes so it is no longer a collector's street and to make it inconvenient for cars passing through. Ha, today I saw a Shamrock Chuck, truck go flying through, you know, 'cause we talked about no signs up, about no, no trucks. I've spoken with a few neighbors and we're proposing some more ideas to fix the problem. And I'll mention just a few, however, some are more easily explained with drawings, so I've got a handout I'll give to you when I'm done. The easy ones are, well, at least the short ones are, reduce the speed to 25 miles per hour. Put speed bumps along that section, but not the usual short speed bumps, but maybe longer or higher, something to really slow people down. Put multiple mini roundabouts at various places in mid-block, wide enough to force slowing down. A few other things. Jericho was recently paved and I'm wondering if El Lago is being considered for repaving. Uh, just this week, we have chunks of pavement that have popped up out of the street and they're just lying there. I'm concerned with your discussion about using striping. I don't see speeders slowing down to avoid the stripes. I think they're gonna drive right over them. At least some of them will. Uh, the digital sign that displays the speed was up again this week, or last week and earlier this week. It appears that some dri- it appears to me, I saw, that some drivers were temporarily slowing down and then resuming a fast speed, or they were not slowing down at all. And then, by the way, one of our neighbors has recently purchased a radar gun and he's clocking speeds. And so far, the fastest as of two days ago, report, is 49 miles per hour. And we'll share that data with you when we have more. I hope you see that we're serious about this issue and we will not stop in our efforts to make changes. So I thank you for listening and.
Thank you. I don't think we can talk back.
Can't talk back?
No. Thank you.
I, I'm not gonna talk back or respond, but if I could just let Council know just that we have reacted to this. And we actually had police patrols actually the next day, actually out there, um, out there taking, uh, readings. We also put the mobile device out and we're also looking at, uh, putting speed tables to actually measure the, the speed. So there have been things that we're planning right now in that area. So I, I realize we can't really address.
Right.
Specifically the comments, but.
I'm gonna take a little chance though, um, it, 'cause what, when she spoke about some of the streets that have been being paved and who, that they want others, I, I wanted to make a general comment that I've been getting some, um, anonymous people, um, asking, "Could you do our street?" And, um, other ways that I'm getting communication that I can't respond. I got a call, a few calls, but there was no phone number. So i- if you want to respond, um, to us to help and to be able to find out, 'cause like, I don't know what the next, um, iteration of the streets are gonna look like in September. But please, um, email me or contact the Town Manager because, um, I can't respond. And I'm frustrated because I have things that I could say or I could help with, but I don't, I can't reach the person. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
To Grady.
Go ahead.
I can talk to Grady again.
Yes, Councilman.
Grady, as you know, we've talked about this. This is a horrible problem. Um, I live on Bainbridge. I wish the average speed was 39, even though it's 20, it's supposed to be 25. We literally have hot rotters going up and down the street at 50, 55, 60 miles an hour. You know, we tried the sign, the electronic sign, uh, which was good for the, for the couple of days it was up.
Before it got vandalized?
And had it analyzed.
Yeah.
The, uh, putting speeds, putting signs up with speeds, uh, is a waste of money. I don't know the answer. I don't begin to know the answer. But that particular street she's addressing, and mine and many others, have serious problems.
Right.
And, uh, I say I'd like it to be looked into. I don't know what we can do, but we've gotta get it on the radar screen.
So, all I can tell you is we do have this traffic subcommittee on the part of the Council. And the staff and I will be studying that. Council, with the last presentation we gave on this, we agree that this would be a group, uh, committee that would be meeting on a quarterly basis. So we'll, we'll be evaluating this more. And I think also, what would be helpful, um, is for us to get together with the neighbors and actually have a, an open house, meet with them, discuss, um, some options, but do more listening, um, which we have been and continue to do that. And then study and see what options we have. Because every street is unique and different and have a different set of solutions.
Thank you. Do you have another speaker card, right?
Yes, I do. Um, Rich, uh, Rataus, Rutkowski?
Mayor, members of the Council, some of you know me, but for those of you that don't and back here, I'm Rich Rutkowski, an 18-year resident of Fountain Hills. And this actually relates to a later, a later, uh, agenda issue, but I'll speak now since I'm here. Thank you. Uh, I'm speaking for myself, but, uh, based upon contact with others, I'm confident that my opinions are shared by many. One year ago, Fountain Hills voters rejected a proposed new primary property tax. Many voters, including me, thought it was too big. Many voters believed that the town council had failed to exercise adequate fiscal responsibility by some of its past actions, like the lagoon, the wayfinding science study, and other studies. Many voters were reluctant to give the council a blank check with no expiration date. And many voters were concerned that the additional revenue would not be spent wisely. So the question remains, how does the town continue to provide for public safety and road maintenance, but do so in a responsible and equitable manner to regain the trust of the voters and to retain that trust? So I have four observations. The proposed sales tax increase. Businesses rely on customers to purchase their goods and services. Our current sales tax rate is already about 1% higher than the rate in Scottsdale, Mesa, and Tempe. Raising it further would make Fountain Hills businesses even less competitive than our neighbors and may likely drive away customers. And that's not good. Sales tax revenues are not directed specifically to public safety or the roads, one of the concerns with the proposed property tax. Two, the fees for public events. At the last meeting, there was much discussion about legacy events being justified with lower use fees. I'm old enough to remember that U.S. Steel and General Motors, in their heyday, provided their employees with health insurance at no cost and up to 13 weeks' annual paid vacation. Well, that was then, but this is now and circumstances have changed, not only for the businesses, but for the town. What once may have been reasonable and affordable is no longer. If an event like Concourse in the Hills pays thousands in use fees while donating proceeds, proceeds to a worthy charity, then other public events warrant equivalent treatment. We need to face reality and apply some fairness. Number three, the public safety infrastructure user fee. So is this a fee or a tax? But regardless, property owners would be paying it. But it would be directed to a specific purpose, which overcomes a maj- main concern of many May 2018 voters. Should it have a sunset? Absolutely. To address the blank check concern of voters and to afford the council an opportunity to prove itself as responsible stewards of our money. The need for funding public safety and infrastructure will remain, but might voters be more willing to respond positively to future requests from a council which has regained and earned the public trust? The fees should be adequate to cover current costs while we seriously investigate more economical options for fire and police protection, preferably by experienced residents and not another costly outside study. And lastly, number four, collecting delinquent court fees. Uh, I applaud Councilman Spelitch for proposing this and other ideas. It's a nice example of common sense. I like common sense. We should all support common sense. So I ask you to carefully consider my comments, similar points made by many others, before you vote on the proposed budget. You can make the right choices. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rutowski. Do we have another, uh, speaker card?
No.
Okay. Um, so, we're gonna go to the consent agenda and then we're gonna take the, um, the hospital, uh, item ahead of everything else because I'm, I'm thinking some, most of you are probably here for that. So let's, uh, does anybody have anything they'd like to remove from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion then, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Thank you, uh, unanimously, I believe. I'm trying to think what I'm hearing. Okay, so, um, we'll go to the regular agenda, but we're gonna go to item 10D first, um, which is the public hearing and consideration of ordinance 1904. Um, and, uh, I'll open the public hearing. Still getting used to all this. And, um, we'll hear from our, uh, senior planner and then we may discuss a bit and then we'll take figure cards if we have them. Thank you.
Mayor, Council, uh, before you, ordinance 19-04 is in regards to the Hemingway property. As it's commonly known, it is at 9,700, uh, North Suaro Boulevard. In May 2015, the property was rezoned from C1 to Hemingway PAD. The Hemingway PAD had a three-year clause in there. And at the end of the three-year clause, the applicant could either request a one-year extension or request, or, or Council could, uh, vote for the property to be reverted back to C1. Last year, the three-year clause ended. And prior to it expiring, the applicant made a request to extend it by one year. In June of 2018, the applicant was approved for that one-year extension. That extension has now expired in May. In February of this year, the applicant submitted a, or, I'm sorry, the property owner submitted an application requesting that the property be reverted from Hemingway back to that C1. And so that is the item before you. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Um, does any Council have any discussion on this item? I'm gonna ask for speaker cards.
Sure.
Okay. Um, do we have any speaker cards on 10D?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. We'll go with that. Go ahead with that, please.
Okay, sure. The first one is, uh, I think it's Ken Robertson? Or Kim Robertson?
Hi.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. My name is Kim Robertson. I've been a Fountain Hills resident since 1987. I've seen a lot of Fountain Hills develop, a lot of things come, a lot of things go. I'm actually, um, surprised a hospital isn't here already with the, um, age group that we have here. We have a lot of assisted living. We have a need for a hospital, not for, just for Fountain Hills, but for the people that traveled 87. They're at Suaro Lake, the Salt River.
Anyone else?
Yes. Linda Bordeaux.
Hello.
Hi. Hi, Mayor, Town Council. I'm Linda Bordeaux. I've been a resident for twenty-somebody years now. Uh, I'm in, in favor of the hospital. I think it's a brilliant idea. I'm surprised we haven't had a larger medical facility as of yet. It's been missing since Mayor moved out. Our population, um, would lend itself to such an, uh, an idea, to have that here. And as Kim said, I don't wanna belabor her point, but we have incoming from the lake, up the eighty-seven both ways. Um, getting down to Shea does take longer, especially if we have somebody who's, you know, more severely injured. It takes a little bit of time to get there. And the other side of that is the jobs that it'll bring to town. We have many people who staff a hospital. Hopefully, we could have some younger families move in, uh, physicians, uh, all kinds of nursing staff and the like would possibly be able to move into our community. And it would bring about higher, not necessarily from the hospital itself, but just the cost of living. You know, the restaurants would benefit from all of it. So I'm definitely in favor of it. Just as an aside, um, and so someone knows, the packet was not able to be downloaded. So I couldn't read all the ins and outs for the information on the town website. It was three-hundred-and-forty-four pages. I don't know if that affected anybody else, but just to give you guys the heads up for that. I couldn't get a hold of it. But anyway, that, that's my take on it. I'm for it, so thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thanks for letting us know. And if that ever happens, let us know, cause we can, we'll print one out for you or something like that, for sure. Um, are there any others on this item? Ten D?
No.
Yeah. Okay, so this is, this is, uh, just to restate, this is, um, having the, the Hemingway pad revert back to C-one, the original zoning. Is there any other discussion on this? We have a motion, I believe?
Uh, I, I move to approve, uh, changing the Hemingway P.A.D. back to a C-one as it was originally, uh, plotted.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance nineteen oh-four. Any other, um, comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Seven to nothing. Now we'll go to the next item, which is ten E. Oops, this always gets really big. Um, Grady, just write straight to Marissa? Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, council. Uh, item ten E is ordinance nineteen dash oh-eight. So I'm gonna start with the summary of staff findings and the planning and zoning commission recommendation. So staff zoning administrator did, uh, an analysis of this use, this facility, in, um, regards to what zoning district it would be most appropriate in. Because it is not specifically addressed in the zoning ordinance, um, looking at the intent of the C-one zoning district and the intent of the C-two, as well as the hours of operation allowed by right in those two different zoning districts, uh, staff zoning administrator found that it would be more appropriate to be located in a C-two, hence the request that is before you. Planning and zoning commission then on May ninth heard the item before you and they are forwarding a recommendation to maintain the C-one zoning district designation and to, um, advise the applicant to request a special use permit so that they could operate between the hours of eleven PM and seven AM. So those are the, that's the summary of, uh, staff and P and Z, um, recommendations before you.
Thank you. I realize I, this is supposed to be a hearing, right? So I'll, I'll open up the public hearing right now. And thank you. Um, so I'm just gonna preface our discussion up here and then, um, we'll obviously ask for, uh, car, speaker cards. The, um, result that planning and zoning, uh, came up with, with their recommendation, uh, I believe had a compelling, um, argument in that keeping it to C-one would, uh, that we would be allowed to ask our zoning administrator to allow a hospital in C-one as of right. Um, that's the direction, I believe, might mitigate, um, many of the concerns of, of the folks that are here and others who have been writing to us. So I wanted to ask the council if they wanted to comment on that aspect of it, on, uh, keeping it C-one and the hospital project in general. And then, um, we'll take some speaker cards for the rest of the hearing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I too agreed with the recommendation that was forwarded from the planning and zoning, uh, group. I, uh, totally agreed with the C-one as I just made the motion to approve. And I totally agreed with the, uh, special use permit, which is not on the agenda tonight. It will be on the agenda later when they submit for, uh, a building permit and bring their site plan in. But I, I am in full agreement with planning and zoning that we do not move it to a C-two, leave it as a C-one.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree as well with all those points and, um, staff did a further analysis, uh, looking at some of our neighboring cities and towns and a few across the state in terms of how they handle, uh, hospitals and their zoning ordinances and, uh, most of them, if not all, place them within a C-one district. So, um, again, feel it's totally appropriate to keep it in that zoning district and, uh, commend P and Z commission. I wasn't here that night, but I understand it was, uh, a little hectic and they took a little break and made a call and all that. And, uh, so I just commend them for coming up with a, uh, a good recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman? Magazine?
Uh, I was in a bit of a quandary, um, in that I have for several years now extolled the virtues of having a hospital in our town. Um, it relates to the average age, uh, here in Fountain Hills, which is, uh, fifty-three percent higher than the average for Arizona. Um, and yet, when, and I did attend, uh, planning and zoning hearing, um, when I heard that the discussion might very well be C-two and I analyzed C-two, I had decided, uh, much against my better judgment, cause I wanted a hospital, to vote against it. Um, but I think C-one with a special use permit makes a lot of sense. I think it, uh, it gives us the hospital we need, um, and will provide the benefits to the citizens. So I intend to support that.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with all of the comments previous to me speaking, but I wanted to say I did receive some emails from residents and a couple of those emails were in favor of a hospital, but not so much in favor of C-two, just in case the hospital didn't go forward and now we have a C-two zoning. So I too agree with the planning and zoning conclusion that the C-one zoning is appropriate and that the special use permit then would be sought in future, um, and that a hospital would be, um, a good use or a good, I guess, use, would be the right word, in a C-one zoned area. So I'm in favor of it as well and agree with the previous comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor, do you have anything to say?
I think it's appropriate to call for a vote.
Thank you. Um, one thing I do, uh, we, we're still in the hearing, so we'll, we'll take co- co- comment cards. I wanted to say that some of the things that I, um, was a little bit, um, again, concerned with, obviously the C-two part of it, um, but also the traffic aspect, um, you know, what will be done to mitigate Trevino and that kinda area, you know, trying to take a left on Suaro, coming out of there. Um, the landscaping, or what happens if it doesn't get to phase two, sort of like, um, you know, what would it look like? So, so I think during the site planning process, they'll have the opportunity to know the, um, and obviously whoever has other concerns, to know those concerns, because I believe the applicant and everyone involved wants to make this a project that everybody would be proud of and be happy to have. So, and, and obviously, I, to me, the traffic is a pretty big part of it and we'll see what we can do. But some of the other items that they were gonna put on as stipulations had to do with rights away and things like that, so I'm, been assured that those things can be addressed and will be addressed. Um, I'm much more comfortable with C-one. It has the setbacks, it has the height restrictions and all of those things. So, um, I think that that would be something I could go along with. Um, do we have any, do, does, I would keep the, the, uh, the hearing open for the speaker cards and then close it? Is that how that works?
That's appropriate.
Okay. So, um, if, if, uh, if after hearing what we said, um, obviously you're always welcome to come up and speak and we're happy to hear from you, but maybe we helped, um, mitigate a little bit of your concerns. Do we have speaker cards, ma'am?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, the first one is, I believe it's Bruce Bryan?
Oh, Rose.
Rose.
That's in regards to the hospital. But, uh, I'm pretty sure.
Hello. Hi.
I'm in total agreement with the hospital. To me, it's just a simple reason. If someone's hurt anywhere at any time, major bleed out or anything like that, you can't go to any hospital in Scottsdale, anyplace else. Maybe you only have two or three minutes, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, and you have a place that's close by. To me, it's just common sense. And regarding to the statues and things, I've only been in the city for three years. They're beautiful. I love them. But to me, I would think the city needs, people are talking about the roads and improvements. Now, all the areas, like for the residential areas, it's fine. And Danny, I think, for the reason, it doesn't have the traffic that the business areas do. So I think the business areas, it should be more important to be able to have roads there, so when people do come in for special occasions, they'll see a nice business road where it's nice, clean and taken care of. And for speed bumps, I'm all for those. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Doug, I believe it's Kabinak?
Good morning. I'm gonna have to ask people to print their names.
Oh, yeah, sorry. It's, yeah. We have their names, that's fine.
Good evening. I was not aware that I was gonna get up here and talk, but anyway, uh, I'm coming up on forty-five years living here in town and, uh, uh, I can't remember how many times I had to call nine-one-one for, I fell off a ladder back in ninety-six and broke a hip. Since then, I've had it replaced five times and, uh, heart condition and, uh, I, well, I don't know, I, I don't need to go into it all, but, uh, all my visits have been to either Donna Osborne or Shea and, uh, I lost track. I feel like I paid for the east wing of the Osborne. But anyway, I'm all in favor of, of having a medical facility here. I'm at the point where I don't even know if I could, I used to drive by myself to the hospital, but I don't know if I could even do it anymore. Anyway, I love it here. It's, I've lived here longer than anywhere else in my life and, I know, some of you fe- folks know me quite well, uh, with the Fountain Festival. I'm a beginner of that. I founded the, the Great Fair in seventy-eight and, uh, had my own studio and gallery and art school. And I started Kay Bueno in eighty-two. I founded Finishing Touch Body Shop in nineteen eighty and, uh, charter member of, uh, the Car Club, uh, American Legion and the Am Vets and, uh, uh, well, that's, there's more, but anyway, uh, I wholeheartedly approve of C-one and to have a hospital here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Robertson?
I just hope I'm tired.
Thank you.
Linda Bordeaux?
So, uh, once again, Linda Bordeaux, you know, I usually don't come here unprepared, but I didn't understand the C-one, C-two until, uh, Councilmember Magazine and, is it LeCron, LeCroni, had talked about it. And I think that makes good sense. Why change it to C-two if we don't have to? Using the special use permit will ensure that we get the hospital and not something else that we don't want down the road. Well, I agree with, you know, we wanna make sure that we have the right setbacks, cause that's a busy corner. We wanna make sure that we have good in- ingress and egress from the building. But, uh, I like what you were saying about that. I would wholeheartedly support special use permit for the hospital. So, thank you. I just wanna toss that in. Thanks.
Thank you, Linda. Next.
Alex Golzinski?
Good evening, Alex Golzinski. Um, I think the hospital's a great idea. My father's ninety-two years old. He's in Fountain View Village and between him and my mother, I've had to rush him to the hospital three times in the last six months. So I don't know how big the hospital is. I didn't get to read it either. I couldn't find it online, but I think it's a great idea for the community. It'll enhance the community and so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if anybody ever has trouble getting any information, please let us know.
David Williams?
Hi. I live on the north boundary of this parcel, on the corner of Suaro and Monterey. My wife and I have been there for about ten years. And we're in favor of the hospital. I think it's a really good proposal. My, one of my concerns is that in, in the past proposals, the staff is, has either deleted or minimized the wall as required by zoning to provide screening. And I need that wall and I, I would like to ask you to tell staff not to do that again. And anyway, for the project.
Thank you. Any response or, we'll, we'll definitely look into that. Thank you.
Rose Anudi, representing two people.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I had a big speech lined up, but you guys made this very easy, so I'm gonna not even go with the speech. I was very concerned with, I've been here for ten years. I moved because of my health and I enjoy being here. I am the third house up on the north and I am the closest to this property line within a hundred feet. So it affects us and so would she.
Right there.
So it affects us really, uh, the most. But having said that, the hospital is a great idea. We've met with them yesterday. They are willing to work with all of us. I think it is something that we could use here in Fountain Hills and our concern is C-two. We don't want to see C-two. We want it to stay C-one and give them their twenty-four-hour operation special permit so that they can open up the hospital. This is not a major intersection right there. This, uh, a major would be on Shea and Suaro, not Trevino and Suaro. And not only that, this prob- there is no buffer between us and what's gonna go there. Where, it's the only property in Fountain Hills, I have a map if you'd like to see it, but I'm sure you know where it's at, that it's the only property that does not have a buffer between the residents and this commercial, that, whatever's gonna go up. But this hospital's gonna be one story. So it's not gonna be as bad as something else coming in under C-two. So I heard you guys say you're, you're in favor of C-one with the special, uh, permit. I thank you for that and thank you for listening.
Thank you. And, and these concerns that you're bringing up, I think are all gonna come into play when we do, uh, the further work with the applicant. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jane Bowe?
Hi.
Mayor and council, I can't begin to tell you how thrilled I am. I thank you. I am so glad it's gonna stay C-one. I'm gonna go home tonight and celebrate. I would have, it would have taken a whole lot of less time if we'd have done this ahead of time, but we really appreciate it. The developers have been great and it's all positive going forward. And we do thank you so much for hearing us. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Yes, Councilman?
Jane, it's nice to see you. I feel like we're, uh, bosom buddies now. I've gotten so, so many emails, so many e- we've gone back and forth with so many emails.
I know, you're good to talk to.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Um, it's like Joanne Mishon?
Me.
Michonne?
C2. We don't want to see C2. We want it to stay C1 and give them their 24-hour operation special permit so that they can open up the hospital. This is not a major intersection right there. This, a major would be on Shea and Saguaro, not Trevino and Saguaro. And not only that, this, there is no buffer between us and what's gonna go there. Where, it's the only property in Fountain Hills, I have a map if you'd like to see it, but I'm sure you know where it's at, that it's the only property that does not have a buffer between the residents and this commercial, whatever's gonna go up. But this hospital's gonna be one story, so it's not gonna be as bad as something else coming in under C2. So I heard you guys say you're in favor of C1 with the special permit. I thank you for that, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. And these concerns that you're bringing up, I think, are all gonna come into play when we do the further work with the applicant. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Jane Bowe?
Hi.
Mayor and council, I can't begin to tell you how thrilled I am. I thank you. I am so glad it's gonna stay C1. I'm gonna go home tonight and celebrate. I would, it would have taken a whole lot less time if we'd have done this ahead of time, but we really appreciate it. The developers have been great, and it's all positive going forward, and we do thank you so much for hearing us. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Yes, councilman.
Jane, it's nice to see you. I feel like we're bosom buddies now. I've gotten so many emails, so many, we've gone back and forth with so many emails.
I know, you're good to talk to.
Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Joanne Mision?
Me-.
Mision? Megan?
Change a tough act to follow. She is. And Doug and Tony, is it?
Tough act to follow, too. I haven't lived here in Fountain Hills. My husband and I have not lived here 40-some decades, but close, close.
Wow, that's true.
What I would like to do is thank Mayor Dickey, Councilman Magazine, and Councilman LeCroni for responding to Don's and my email regarding our concern with the hospital. We're not opposed to that. Our neighbors are not opposed to that. What we are concerned with is what's special about 1908? Who keeps slipping that in? I don't know. Is there an ulterior motive? But we want it dashed and out. Gone. We want C1 with special use. Thank you.
That's the ordinance, and, you know, I think, basically, we're going through a process here, and we had staff who felt, as they had mentioned in the beginning, we had a planning and zoning meeting that kind of worked through it all and came up with something that looks like a solution that maybe we're gonna be able to go with. But I think everybody is good faith, going forward, just trying to get the good information together, and this is kind of how we've arrived where we are. So, thank you, Joanne. Any others?
Yes. Larry Myers, representing two.
Hi, Larry.
Hi, Larry Myers. Resident 38 years. I must like the place, or I would have left a long time ago. I'd like to go back to last year and thank the council members who were here that kept it from becoming C2 last year. They worked with us, heard our concerns, and kept it C1 or the Hemingway until tonight. I think those developers were particularly good guys, and Councilman Brown said it about all, said about everything we need to know that night, and so I want to thank the members from last year for that, so that we get to this point tonight. And saying that these guys, they seem pretty good guys to me, and a hospital sounds like a pretty good idea to me as well. So when you get a win for everybody, a win for the town, some development fees, a hospital, a win for the neighbors, because they're all happy that it's staying C1, and a win for the council, because, as Mr. Ridkowski put it, there needs to be some trust around here so we can get moving forward on some issues you'll be talking about later on tonight. I think it's a great day for Fountain Hills, and I wish these guys all the best. I want to thank the council for coming to this nice decision and listening to us again. Thank the Planning and Zoning Commission, because they heard us on May the 9th and put forward their recommendation based on the concerns that we brought. Let's move on from this parcel at Saguaro and Trevino and take a 50-year piece of empty land and put something on it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to throw a little caution in the wind. I mean, we still have Jane and others. We have a party house ordinance still on the books, so don't get too wild tonight.
Good job.
That's great. Any more?
Yes. Dan Kaufman?
He's gonna screw it up.
Mayor, council? I guess they've already said it. I had a big speech written up, and I want to, you know, thank for everybody working together. This is, you know, part of a town that, you know, I haven't been here as long as Doug, 40 decades, and I hope I am someday, but, you know, I guess, thank you, everybody. And I'm glad we can all get together on this. So, that's all I'm gonna say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any others? Yes. Jim Tate?
Hi.
Hi there. I recognize some faces up there. I'll keep it short, because it sounds like you guys are doing your job and zoning as well, so congratulations on taking care of this issue. I'm 100% in favor of a hospital here, and I've lived here just about as long as Doug. Good job up there, everybody. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Judy Bechal?
Thank you, Mayor Dickey and councilmembers. I'm Judy Bechal, and I have been in town for 25 years, but my husband's been here for 40, and I just want to say I'm 100% behind this hospital. I think our community needs it. I think our veterans need it, and I want to thank you for making some good decisions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
We just received only three written against.
Not that?
Three against.
Yes. Okay. They were against us changing to C2, I would assume, so. Any other comments before I close the hearing? See, I remembered. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing now, and unless anybody has any other comments...
I've got a comment to make.
Oh, yes, sir.
So I can tell the town of Fountain Hills that I've sat through some extremely contentious conversations over the past 10 years, and the way that this group came together and organized and worked together for the good of Fountain Hills should be written up in the newspaper. It should be posted. It is, it is a real joy to see what I refer to and have forever, the vigilante groups get together with the developers and come to a mutual agreement on a really good thing for Fountain Hills, and I thank both parties. Thank you.
With that, would someone like to make a motion? Remember what we're doing here, so you can say it, you can say it either way, you can move to not approve, or what?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the change of the ordinance from Hemingway, whatever it is. I had Hemingway PAD to C1. Second?
Wait, hold on a second. So I think we've already done that aspect of it. So what we're gonna do is either take a motion to approve this and, sounds like, not approve it, or you can make a motion to not approve.
We, I would make the motion to not approve making the C1 district a C2. Second?
We have a motion to approve to not move to C2. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you so much. That's unanimous.
Good job, guys.
Thank you. Now, we're gonna go backwards to that other little item, the budget, right? We will open the public hearing on Resolution 2019-24, which is the final budget for the town of Fountain Hills. Do we have a, thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. We have a presentation, right?
Yeah, we'll just maybe wait a moment.
Yeah.
I'll try not to take this personally.
I'm done with this. Ready?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, as you're aware, one of the most important things, activities that the town engages in each year is the annual budget process. The annual budget process is a form or a way of the council communicating its top priorities. It outlines a spending plan to meet those priorities and objectives that the council has, and so, as you're aware, we've gone through from the beginning of this process. We started our budget back in December, when all the budgets were due. We had a supplemental process where department directors submitted any new items that they wanted to for the budget, and in order for those to be considered, they either had to have revenue to support those new items, or offsets, or savings in other parts of the budget to be able to accommodate those. Then we actually had the council retreat back in February, where we gave you a little bit of a preview of the budget, and then we were able to take some input on some portions of the budget that you wanted to have input on. As an example tonight, one of the items in the budget is a code enforcement officer that was a high priority of the council, so that made it. And another item that the council made it very clear that they wanted was to have some sort of person that can be collecting revenue that was not collected previously in the part of the court fines and fees. I'm gonna go ahead and introduce our new finance director. His name is David Pock, and he's been with us for about three weeks now. He's gonna go through a brief presentation, and at the end, we'll be happy to answer any questions. David, go ahead and roll.
Good evening, mayor.
Thank you.
Vice mayor, members of council. Congratulations, you've made it to the last budget presentation for fiscal year 1920. Hopefully, it'd be nice and short. It's just meant to be a summary of basically what you've already seen and discussed in previous meetings. So as you know, the tentative budget that you adopted at the last council meeting was $32.6 million. That's the cap. That's as high as it can go, and then that's what you're adopting tonight. This is just a snapshot of the previous six fiscal years compared to this next fiscal year. There's about, the largest difference is just over $9 million between fiscal year 15 and next year. These are the different areas within the budget that are funded from all the different portions, all the different funds there are. The largest there, obviously, is public safety. That includes fire, rescue, law enforcement, those contracts, as well as animal control, crisis response, detention costs, and that sort of thing. The next highest, special revenue funds, includes the streets/herf funds, court enhancement, environmental fund, and a small portion of the, for cottonwoods. The next area, the capital funds, that includes capital projects, CIP fund, facilities replacement, and the development, development fees. The next slide, as Grady mentioned, in addition to the base budgets for each department, they also submitted supplemental budget requests. Out of the 1.4 that was requested, a third of those are being recommended for approval. And for net increase, at the end, after offsets that Grady mentioned, is $98,000. Next slide just shows that the change in the public safety contracts of almost $700,000. That's 14.3 for the law enforcement and 3 for rural metro. Also, at council's direction, there is a 3.5 inch, or 3.5% salary increase for staff, and that's gonna be implemented in two parts, the first in July and the second in January. This is just a table of the changes from this current fiscal year to next fiscal year. Modest increase of .2 million dollars. The next goes through each individual service and the changes between this year and next year. The largest differences there between general government and the administration is the moving of the liability insurance from the administration department into general government. Again, changes, this is just in the operating funds, which includes the general fund. We've got the supplemental budget requests, salary adjustments, the four new positions, four full-time positions, and the one part-time position, and some reclassifications. Again, the public safety changes, the reduction in legal costs, and the reduction in the contract for inspection, since we're bringing in a code enforcement officer. That contract will not be as high next year. This is a graph showing the number of FTEs over the years. Next year, there will be 61 FTEs, and that includes the four full-time and one part-time There were personnel requests from Development Services, Public Works, Administration, the courts, and Community Services. The total for next year will be 49 full-time, 27 part-time, for a total of 60.82 FTEs. All right, so there we are at our $32.6 million for next year. Tonight, since you passed the first resolution that adopted the tentative budget on May 7th, tonight, we recommend adoption of the final budget. There's actually two different resolutions. The first is to adopt that budget. The second resolution is on the implementation of that budget, and that includes organizational charts, FTE schedules, job descriptions, and the pay plan. We'll be back in two weeks to ask for your consideration of the tax levy and to adopt that. And then, as the mayor mentioned earlier, on August 13th, we'll be back to ask your consideration of the sales tax increase and the public safety fee. And that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
So much.
I've got the answer man still here.
Council magazine?
Just a quick one. Grady mentioned a collections person. Is that the halftime person we're talking about, and is that in the court budget?
It is. I'm not quite sure. It should be in the court budget. It's a supplement, and it is part-time, and it's a, it's not gonna be in our account for full-time equivalents. It's gonna be a temporary employment agreement that we're gonna do for the first year to evaluate, but yes, it is there.
Any other council discussion? Do we have any speaker cards?
Yes.
I think we're ready for that. Please.
Bob Shelstrom?
Hi. Hello. I am Bob Shelstrom. I'm a resident of Fountain Hills, and I had the opportunity to go through this budget. There's a few things I want as a caution, since it really is more of a guideline than it is an appropriation. The first thing is with the pavement program. There's something that should have been done a year ago by this council that still hasn't been done, and that's setting your condition criteria for the roads. We, as you recall from our report, we had a overall average condition of 60 PCI, which is good, but what Mr. Weldy needs to be able to come up with an accurate budget on what needs to be this year and the next year, is a criteria from you as far as what sort of condition index you want for the various types of roads, and what the minimum you find acceptable. This can make a difference that goes up exponentially. For example, if you want your average pavement condition index to be 60, it would be a certain cost. If you go up to 75, as shown in the IMS report, it may be double the cost for a small increase. Without that direction from you, you're just throwing a dart at a board on this thing, and you really need to get that down so you can properly plan, especially if you're planning revenue increases. The other thing I noticed... The other thing I noticed in some of these things that, there seems to be a disconnect in a lot of the capital program that relates to the capital work as prepared by CRA and the overall reserve fund. It seems like we're spending $3.2 million on those capital projects. And taking a look at the reserve fund report, which I be, which you, of course, have, that was prepared in 2016, this year, we should only be spending $166,000 on the incredibly detailed report that they put together. And the following years, nothing goes over $500,000. So either we're adding to that list with discretionary projects, or we are perhaps moving up projects and essentially shortening their economic life by doing them prematurely. So it's a concern, but once again, this is just a budget, not an appropriation or acceptance. That was the main things that I had on this. Of course, there's some issues with other items, but I think that's just about it. If you had any other comments or concerns, I'd be happy to speak to them.
Thank you.
Oh, just one more thing, quickly. I'm going to be talking about this on the contract. There seems to be a big issue that I found that's out there, and Ms. LaCronin, her experience as a state's attorney and division of responsibility between county and local police, I think it's a real big issue. It could be a seven-figure issue in this budget, so we will discuss that when you're going forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so the public hearing's still open, is that what you were saying? Does anybody want to respond, because this is on the agenda? Okay. Are there any other speaker cards or any other comments from the council?
Yes.
Okay.
Larry Myers?
I'm going to withdraw my card this time.
Sure. Frank Doolittle?
Looking at the figures up there for, especially for MSCO, I have a lot of questions of where we're spending $4.7 million when the safety in the town, people don't stop at red lights, they don't stop at stop signs. I got hit on Malta and Suvaro intentionally because people don't care. You don't, you can go out on any street. We go to Fountain Hills Christian Center, I was out there working one day with another guy, we counted the cars, 50% never stopped at all or slowed down, 30% slowed down a little bit, 20% actually stopped. And the people are being hit here in town for no reason because of that. Accidents on Suvaro, and there, at Malta, where I got hit, you, you can sit there on Parlin or Malta there all day and count the cars, it come down through the 50, 60 mile an hour. Now, I've talked to their law enforcing here, and they seem to think there's nothing wrong. I seen in the paper, you can go 15 mile an hour over before there's a ticket, and, I mean, if you go 50, 60 mile an hour, you go down through there, Malta, come down, going south, there's no way you can pull out on Parlin and make a decent chance of living. You're going to get hit. I was there one day on Malta, and almost five were in an accident in one consideration. And why are we increasing the money? I figure just throwing it out. Anybody, anybody in this, in this town will tell you, and it's written in the paper every week, people are concerned about the traffic. And I call them, and nothing is being done. If you can run over four people, kill three instantly, and nobody is held, there's something And there's only one reason why they were held. The person was held, there's only one reason. And it wasn't because of Fountain Hills. I don't, I don't see it. I don't see it. I could, I could run, I could run a police department here on a third of that money, and I'd have a heck of a lot better job. I guarantee you that. And one other concern I have is the, the money we're spending on the streets and stuff. Like one gentleman, written in the paper, he works in asphalt. He made a statement, I should have cut it out and brought it in. He said, "You paid so many million to get that street done, you paid for number one asphalt, and you got number three." Now, there's a heck of a lot of difference in the price of number one and number three. I see a lot of street repairs done around here, they throw it in the hole, you drive by, pick it up on your car, and then two days later, you, you got the cars covered with it, and the, and the holes are empty. When it would only take a simple deal of putting a little bit of sand on top to, to keep it from collecting on the cars and everything.
Thank you, Mr. Doolittle. The time is up, but thank you, we appreciate it. Does anybody would like to respond? Yes, sir?
Now, that raises, oh, probably 20 or 30 questions in my mind, but there's one that I want to ask Justin about. What is this about the quality of the asphalt one versus three? Want to address that? Because it doesn't sound correct to me. Councilmember Magazine, I am, I'm unable to answer that question because I do not know all the facts, and I do not want to provide inaccurate information. Thank you.
Any, any other responses? Councilman?
Yes, thank you. As far as the pavement management plan, I totally agree, and I know this council talked about this a couple of months ago when we approved the contract on the bid for the mill in Overly out here for 3.5 million. So I know it's scheduled to be presented to us in the fall, probably September, so I was with Director Weldy today talking about this very thing, and, I mean, this council will be asked to put a number on that plan, and, you know, that's probably not going to affect this budget we're going to approve tonight, but it will impact future ones, of course, depending on the magic number we select based on staff recommendation, so that is in the works.
Yeah, and two things. So to dovetail on to what the council member just said, there's two parts to this. One is the assigning the PCI or the condition that the council wants to assign for both arterials, collector's streets, and your local streets. So those will obviously have different numbers, and that is, that's always been the plan. I think Mr. Shelstrom must have missed the meeting when we talked about that, but we talked about that earlier this spring. And then we also talked about having a 10-year pavement management program, and that's going to be also addressed this fall. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with that.
And about the, we're going to be talking a little bit about the public safety contract at, at the end of this meeting, but also, we've been in a lot of contact and been getting a lot of information from our MCSO officers and meeting with the leadership there, and the, the traffic is obviously something we've been talking about for a long time, and we are addressing at our last council meeting. We had a detailed description of some of the steps that we're taking to try and make our safes, our streets safer, and two items today are also about that. And I also know that our captain and the chief and anybody in MCSO is willing to talk about the expenses and the activities, and indeed have already done so with, with many of us and with residents, and we, we understand that they're, they've been very responsive, so, but we continue and understand that there's always room for improvement for everybody's involved, and we're so noted. Any, any other comments on the budget?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other from the council? Would someone like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-24?
Public hearing.
Close public hearing.
Good job.
And I'll make a motion to approve. So is this, let me just ask about this special meeting thing, then. So are we in the special meeting now, or do I have to start that? That's where the vote comes, right? In the special meeting? So we're in a special meeting, which I guess is the next item, 9A. So I think we can take the motion there, correct?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-24.
Thank you, Councilwoman. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. I don't know why we have these interesting little, you know, like we were saying, sub-meetings, but we got through it. Next is number 10C, consideration of adopting the town organizational charge, which is the second step to our budget, correct, Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Without belaboring this, this item before you is basically what we call the implementation package. So all the items that are typically in the budget, we also have what we call the implementation package. This is basically all the policies that the council follows. It includes our organization charts, the, the proposed pay plan, the schedule of authorized positions, job descriptions, and a comprehensive fee schedule. We also had some minor reclassifications as well that are recommended as part of this. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. I recommend approval of this.
Thank you. Any questions or speaker cards on this item?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2019-26.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Unanimous, I think.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now we go to item F, which is about our noise ordinance. And do we go straight to Aaron with that?
You may. Let me, Aaron wasn't here, so let me just provide a little bit of background, and Aaron's going to take off when I'm ready for that, so. About a year ago, the council recalls, I think it was almost exactly a year ago, the council adopted a party nuisance ordinance, which was designed to try to help some of our neighbors who were experiencing some loud parties and noises due to some of these rental properties that were in town. And these rentals were short-term rentals for like a weekend, and we started having issues with weddings that were being held, and wedding receptions, and party venues, and so we really had a big problem a year ago. A lot of these were Airbnbs that were really only authorized to be used for lodging, and they were used for party house-type venues. So we really dealt with a number of neighbors, and we collectively worked the staff and the council to try to address this issue. We adopted it with the understanding that in six months, it would come back for further evaluation, and then, I'm sorry, we, the council adopted it, and it was understood that we would come back after an evaluation of this, how it was working. During that time period, we had some issues also with the enforcement from MCSO. They, they were experiencing some concerns that they were receiving from the county attorney's office on the constitutional enforcement activities that they were doing as a whole, as an agency, and so they had expressed some concerns. So then we started just only enforcing the noise ordinance that we currently had on the books, which was adopted previously a year earlier. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over. We did have a retreat in February. The council direction was to bring back some changes to this, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to our town attorney to talk a little bit about what went into what you have before you tonight, and all the different parties who were involved in vetting this. So I'll turn it over to, to Mr. Aronson.
Thank you, Grady. Mayor, members of council, to dovetail with what Mr. Miller discussed, I, along with a group of, of other individuals, council member LaCronin, Captain Kratzler, and our town prosecutor, Mark Iacovino, and, and Mr. Miller, we conducted an evaluation of the town code to see, recognizing that there were improvements that could be made and probably should be made to this ordinance, but how we might improve the noise ordinance as a whole in order to provide for more clarity for citizens, for better enforcement ability for law enforcement officers, and ultimately for just a better situation on the whole in light of the feedback that we've gotten on previous provisions of the noise ordinance, including the nuisance party ordinance. The general intent of these revisions is to make the noise ordinance as a whole more easily understood. The most significant changes to the ordinance, as you can read in the, the red line that appears in the, the agenda as an appendix to the ordinance, are, one, the creation of both per se noise violations, which will apply when noise exceeds a certain decibel level threshold, which were already previously set out in the code. And then violations for unreasonable noise, excuse me, offenses for unreasonable noise violations, which are applicable in instances where a person creates unreasonable noise with the intent to disturb the peace or with the knowledge of doing so. These changes, among others, that are already stated in the, the staff report, are more aligned with state law. They're more aligned with the way that MCSO understands how to enforce noise violations, and does a little bit more cleanup work, as you can see in the red line there. It also, it also eliminates the public, the nuisance party designation as a whole in favor of the more broad-level noise restrictions that we've included here today. And the last aspect of it is that other offenses that were included under the previous nuisance party ordinance can now be enforced under existing state law or existing provisions of state code, including but not limited to violations for parking or obstructing the street, violations for minors in possession, among other things. With that explanation, I'm happy to take any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Aaron. Any questions? Yes, Councilman?
Aaron, is any of this affected by the legislation signed by the governor and introduced by legisla, Kavanaugh, legislative Kavanaugh?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Magazine, the recently enacted state legislation is related to short-term rentals, and it complements the noise ordinance, but it's not directly related. Specifically, HB 2672, the bill that you're referencing, requires owners of short-term rentals to provide municipalities with contact information to respond to complaints in a timely manner, and imposes penalties with ADOR as a consequence of failure to comply. So although, although as far as the town is concerned, they're tied, one doesn't necessarily relate, directly relate to the other.
Thank you. I read about it in the, in the, I guess it was, there were different reports on this. I just couldn't follow it, and I tried to look at one and think about what we were doing, and I just couldn't figure it out, so that's helpful.
Yes, Councilmember Magazine, that, the state statute, the state bill that is now, will become law, it certainly evolved over the course of the legislative session, so I understand your pain in trying to follow the evolution of that.
Councilwoman?
Thank you. Aaron, I just wanted to commend you with all the work that you put into this, because we did look at other statutes from other cities. I don't envy all that you had to do in this. I know it's your job, but it's, it's difficult to go through a statute, try to eliminate the things you think aren't necessary, add the things you think are, and it's not something I typically do every day as an attorney, and it was very tedious, and I just want to thank you for all the work you did on it, and cleaning it up and making it better understandable.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you for your work, too.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor, thank you. And I understand, I think we talked about this earlier, and it's not directly tied into this ordinance, but I know the captain and the, has put together some protocol and some guidelines to, you know, help train the deputies and give them guidelines on how to approach this, if, if this issue were to arise out in the field, and so, I don't know if anyone wanted to elaborate on that, but that's helpful, too, in terms of enforcing this new one, correct?
It is, and although I'm sure that Captain Kratzler could speak more specifically to the protocol, my understanding from him is that he and/or others have gone through with the folks that are going to be doing the day-to-day enforcement of really any ordinance, but specifically the, the noise ordinance, to make sure that the public understand, that complaining party understands what the response is going to be, what their role of involvement may need to be, and additionally, what the allegedly offending party would need to do, whether to just stop it, let it go with a warning, or whether there are next further steps that need to be taken. So yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Well, thank all of you for all your work, Captain, and Aaron, and Sherry, and everybody that put this together for us. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 19-11, amending the Town of Fountain Hills Code, Chapter 11, offenses relating to noise.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. Passes unanimously. Next, we have a item about, a roundabout and closing an intersection. Grady?
Thank you. Before Mr. Weldy speaks, our public works director, I- Before Mr. Weldy speaks, our Public Works Director, I just wanted to let the council know that this is, again, a follow-up item on public safety as it relates to, I'm sorry, pedestrian safety, as it relates to Avenue of the Fountains. The council subcommittee, when they met back in March, this was one of the high visibility areas that they wanted to really improve, and that was Avenue of the Fountains and La Montana. They highly recommended a roundabout at that location, right in front of the post office and the town hall building here. This has been something that's been discussed for many years, and this is probably the most confusing intersection probably in the state of Arizona, so this is a really good thing. So, what is before you is actually the design for a roundabout there. And we also had, as part of the recommendation from the council subcommittee on pedestrian safety, was also to have the linear park that's on Avenue of the Fountains where it comes, and there's a separation between the two sections of that linear park at Verdi River Drive, that that would then be joined as one. I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Weldy, who will talk a little bit more about the scope and what is before you tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. As you all know, this intersection has certainly been under consideration and study for many, many years. On October of last year, the CK Group brought forth several proposals of what could possibly be done to make improvements and enhance the safety features and the traffic movements in the intersection. At that time, the mayor and council elected one of the options, which was to basically put the intersection on a diet, reduce the width of it, put in some free right turns and some other changes. We are back before you tonight with their second option for this, which was to construct a roundabout, and not a typical one, because as you all know, the Avenue of the Fountains, La Montana intersection, and in fact, all of the streets that intersect the avenue, with the exception of Palisades, they're a little bit unique, because we have an exceptionally wide and relatively long median in those areas. And those pose some challenges for traffic engineers and the town staff to address the concerns. The concept that the CK Group put forth in its, in your packet, is to put a roundabout in there that is really not roundabout, but mostly egg-shaped. This concept, if elected to move forward with tonight, will in fact put this elliptic-type roundabout or traffic circle in here. It will also make changes to both the east and west side of the Avenue of the Fountains at La Montana. It will require some modifications to those areas. Another thing, and we've heard some concerns about this in the past from the present council and past council and the residents as a whole, is how are we going to address the pedestrian safety? I believe that you can see by the concept number two in your plan, that the way you address pedestrian safety at these roundabouts is with an offset, to offset the crossings a little bit further away, and so it gives the approaching vehicles and the departing vehicles in and around the roundabout an opportunity to see the pedestrians more clearly. We do not know at this point, because we have not yet brought back to the mayor and council, which we will do in the fall, what type of improvements will be proposed for the center of this. There have been discussions about possibly some artwork in there, but not artwork that we would typically allow people to come up to, but rather, put plaques in a couple of locations, offset in one of the avenue areas, that would allow people to read the plaque, to see what the artwork is, or it could just possibly be simple landscaping. The second part of the contract that we have before you tonight, and is also shown in the packet, is the consideration of curbing Avenue of the Fountains on the north and southbound lanes of Verdi River. And so, basically, what that would do is all of the traffic at Verdi River and the avenue would be forced to turn right, there would be no through traffic. This is just a rough draft of what could possibly be there. There have been some discussions internally and with some elected officials that discuss the possibility of putting seat walls and/or bollards, and/or a main gathering area, or a large paved plaza. There has also been discussion to not construct the seat walls, but put in removable bollards that would allow temporary access for special events, should they need to get in there and set up larger tents or move equipment in. With these two, it increases our overall contract amount by approximately $70,000 for this intersection. On the first section, the CK Group has indicated that they would have the majority of the information in the first concept with some detailed plans available approximately 16 weeks after we provide them with a notice to proceed. That will actually be sometime in the fall, whenever they would personally come here and give a presentation. They also noted in their packet, for the consideration of Avenue of the Fountains and Verdi River, that it would take four to six weeks for that. However, during that timeframe, the mayor and council will be on break. And so, the intent is to bring both of the proposals forward with some details and additional information, most likely in September. It should be noted in the interim, in the intersection of Avenue of the Fountains and Verdi River, that the town, under direction from the town manager, staff, excuse me, intends to move forward with installing additional stop signs there and making that an always stop. These will be the latest and greatest stop signs, and they will, they are actually LED lit. I do believe that the street superintendent, Mr. Pierce, had an example of one of these signs while I was out. With that, if you have any questions related to either one of the locations on this proposal, I will be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Justin, any questions? Councilman?
Thank you. Justin, you mentioned the bollards and special events, and so I'm not exactly clear, is it gonna be designed to have those or not have those, or are we gonna decide on that later? Or, I didn't quite catch that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sharno, what we'll do in the fall is we'll bring back some concepts and some possibilities for that location on the avenue. We do not yet have all of that information, as we simply have not had enough time to prepare that and gather input. The town staff, management, and possibly some elected officials, will need to meet with the businesses and the residents that it would be affected, or at least have an interest in this, and get some input from them for that section of the avenue and the improvements that will, may or may not go in there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Magazine?
I've had some number of folks approach me and say they don't like roundabouts. I'm guessing that in some cases, it's fear of change. What caught my eye in this report, as much, by the way, I like the schematic of option two a lot. What caught my eye in the report is the benefits of roundabouts versus stop signs. Seventy-five percent reduction in injury collisions, ninety percent reduction in fatality collisions, thirty-seven percent reduction in overall collisions, forty percent reduction pedestrian collisions, encourages low speeds, reduction in travel delay, et cetera, et cetera. And the reason I read those is not just for the people who are here, but anybody watching us on Channel 11, that they can see that roundabouts really would be a tremendous benefit to the community.
Thank you. Councilman, anyone else? Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, the, is this just the design, or is this actually going to be working drawings for $70,000?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Brown, for the Avenue and La Montana, we are moving forward with the full design and a sealed set of plans. For Avenue of the Fountains and Verdi River, we are going to provide some concepts, because again, we do not have all the information and the input we feel necessary to bring to you to make a final decision on that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mayor and council, if I may, I just wanted to let you know, because of the problems that we have with that location, and people crossing, and jaywalking, and drivers not really paying attention, there had been a decision by the council at one point to make that an always stop. So, we're just gonna do that, and then if, after going through the design process and the public input process, and the council ultimately approves a design for that location, then obviously, we'll just go ahead and remove those. But I think it's a great interim step to help improve safety until this is finally decided what direction to go.
Thank you. We appreciate that, because the urgency is almost there with these issues, and that's a really good thing to do until we decide what we really want to do with that. Any other, any speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Frank Doolittle?
My main concern is, putting a roundabout there is gonna take up a lot of space, number one. If the law enforcing enforced the stop sign, we would have no problem. The pedestrians would be able to go the way they should go, and there wouldn't be no, the problem we have right now, without law enforcing, enforcing the law there, the people will run right over you. I'm talking about cars. If they're in a hurry, they come up there, and they don't stop, they just go on through, no matter what, if you're, if it's a T-bone or what. They don't care. So, if we had law enforcing, you don't need to spend the money on a roundabout and have all that time held up, all the, the time that that's held up, the post office and everything else, trying to get into the post office and everything. Just enforce what you got, put the stop signs there, and require everybody to stop where they're supposed to in a line. Some people are not more important than other people, although they say they are.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Sir, I just need to follow up on your comments. I'm over here. I wanna follow up, I wanna follow up on your comment and your earlier comments. Do you have any idea what size police force we would have to have to place police at all of the places you're talking about? Stop signs and so on. We simply couldn't do it. And the police cannot, I don't know how many we have on the road right now, but enforcing these traffic violations is important, but we simply don't have the manpower to do it.
Well, I turned Malta and Swarro, I could ride 50 tickets in about an hour. All they gotta do, if somebody, I talked to the law enforcing the other day, they said we warn people. Warning people does no good whatsoever.
Thank you, sir. We don't have back and forth like this, but thank you very much. As a pedestrian who is in that intersection all the time, there are, it's just a, it's just a confusing thing. I mean, you have to look at people who are taking lefts, who are taking rights, who get to the middle, don't know what to do, and everybody's polite and trying to wait for everybody. And the way you have the crosswalks here is just gonna simplify it tremendously for walkers. I mean, I walk there almost every day, so I really appreciate that. Do we have another?
Yes, yes, Mayor. Bob Shelstrom?
Hello, Bob Shelstrom from Fountain Hills. I had an opportunity to review the designs you showed on the website, and this is one of the most horrible and decreasing safety situations I've ever seen. When you look for pedestrian safety, the most important criteria is a long, straight view of where a pedestrian can be walking. In our current situations, we have that. If you're on La Montana, heading to the west, if somebody's walking across to the post office from over at the town hall, you have at least, I believe, 100 to 150 feet straight access and view. Could lighting be better? Yes. But the bottom line is, when you have a curve, as you will hear, will your time to be able to stop, should you be confronted with a pedestrian, be greater or less? If somebody was at a stop, heading to the west on La Montana, saw a pedestrian there, of course, right in front of them, they could stop, they're not moving, but over on the Avenue of the Fountain side, on the far side, they have about 100 to 150 feet to see them, identify them, and be able to take corrective action. With this, you don't have that. You're gonna be in a curve, and you're gonna be worried about somebody coming out from a yield to be able to get back onto that system. And when you're on a curve, you're looking this way, you're looking that way, you're looking this way. It deters you from being able to see the pedestrians, it reduces your stop time, should somebody be jaywalking, which we certainly don't want to hit them, even if they're jaywalking. And the bottom line is, it is worse from just about every aspect. The cost, I've heard, $1 million, I think that's low. So, if you're gonna be spending this money for something that's actually gonna be worse than what you have now, that certainly does not seem like money well spent. Final issue. Whenever you look at a problem with an intersection like this, first you establish the root cause of collisions or accidents. I've only been here six years, and I've already seen two accidents, and they were both the same thing. They were heading on La Montana from the post office, heading towards the lake, and there was a car coming on Montana who had stopped, legally moved, was moving forward, but the driver on Avenue of the Fountains did not know to yield. They were assuming they had right of way after stopping, and they were incorrect. What I had recommended earlier, that may solve this problem and dramatically cut down on any accidents, put a sign there at that stop that clearly says, "La Montana Traffic Does Not Stop," and for them to yield. You put that sign there in big letters right next to the stop sign, they look one way, they look the other, and they see somebody's moving from the stop, they don't assume they have right of way, so they wait for the car. I would be willing to bet you that you can cut down on those accidents, which I would assume are the majority that you've had, I wouldn't be surprised if by 50 to 75 percent, for a $200 sign. And it would seem prudent, on the behalf of the board, try it, cost a few hundred dollars before you spend $70,000 designing something that's gonna make the situation potentially much worse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any response or comments?
Thank you.
Any other speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Are we ready for a motion or any other discussion, please?
Motion, then.
So, we've worked on that intersection for probably, I would guess we've rearranged that intersection in the 26 years I've lived here, at least five times. Randy Harold has the latest rendition of what we're doing, and it's still not very successful. It's not successful at all. I would guess that we've had, and I, I'm shooting from the hip, but I would guess we have probably had, in the last 12 months, I would bet we've had eight accidents there, not two. And before Randy actually redesigned that intersection, I would guess we were having two or three a month, especially during the snowbird season. And once again, I'm shooting from the hip, don't shoot the messenger, but it's better now than it was, and I am, I am all for the roundabout, after watching what has gone on. And Scottsdale on Cactus Road would be a fair comparison. It's traffic calming. There's only one law that you have to remember, and that's yield to the person in the circle. That's the only driving law you have to remember. So, with that being said, I would, I would like to approve the amendment number three to PSA-C 2017-87 with CK Group for the amount of $70,013.64. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mayor, I have a quick question, if you don't mind. Justin, the plan with putting the intersection on a diet, was there a rough estimate on how much that would cost to construct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sharno, I do not have those figures with me tonight. We did have them all dialed in at that time, but I have stopped thinking about that since then. So, I can certainly provide that information.
Justin, I think, if I'm not mistaken, though, for the placeholder for the capital improvement budget for the roundabout, I believe it was $600,000.
That is for the roundabout, though, right?
Right, not for the design.
But I was talking about the concept plan of putting it on a diet with the right-hand turns.
Oh, it was pretty high. It was in, I thought, two, $300,000. I, we'll have to get back to you on that. I don't want to make up a number. I apologize.
No, that's fine. I just was curious in how it relates to the cost of a potential roundabout.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nay.
I also vote nay.
I'm not sure what that is, then. Five to two, or?
I don't hear from our colleagues.
Oh. I don't know, I don't know what the, what the count was. I guess we do a roll call.
Vice Mayor Tallis?
Aye.
Councilmember Sharnow?
Nay.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Councilmember LaCron?
Aye.
Councilmember Spelch?
Nay.
Mayor Dickie?
Aye.
Are there art? Okay, so four to two. Thank you. Thanks, thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
Next is the, okay, this is about the texting and driving, our hands-free law. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, about a year ago, April of 2018, the mayor and council adopted an ordinance mending our town code, which basically prohibited texting while driving within the Fountain Hills town limits. The ban only applied to written text messaging while driving, which, as you know, texting is one of the biggest causes of distracting driving. Recently, we had been following a bill, House Bill 2318, through the legislature, and it passed, and the governor signed it into law. And essentially, it does one step better than what our current ordinance is, and that basically requires any, any communications through a cell phone to be all hands-free. So whether that be texting or speaking while you're driving on a cell phone, it requires all hands-free communications for drivers. I think this is a big plus for our state. We're one of the last states in the country to have this law in place. What you have before you is an ordinance which helps conform our existing ordinance to the state law. Under the state law, we have until January 1st of 2021, when ours would actually have to go away, the texting while driving. This basically conforms, and I really recommend approval of this because this allows the sheriff's office to really just enforce one law. This is the law of the land now. This is going to be what all the other cities are all going to be required to enforce. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
I guess in reading this, it's clearer than what I've heard, but is it true then that, well, first of all, the state law is ARS 28-914, so it's, we can, the law enforcement can enforce that as of today. And basically, it allows law enforcement to write warnings, or I don't even know what they're calling them in the statute, right until the enactment of the statute where they are allowed to cite. So they can't cite until then. So if our ordinance then is just going to mirror that, which is basically, we're just going to adopt state law and not go beyond that, I'm fine. But I had heard that we were going to do something different, which I'm not fine with.
Well, I'll go ahead and have the attorney who was involved in this, but I think part of the difference is our fines are still in effect until the state law really fully kicks in, correct?
Well, that's correct. So we've actually adopted the state's fine structure, so that's the first aspect of it. The second aspect of it is HB 2318, which was the state, which was the House bill that implements this handheld phone ban, permits cities and towns that already have an existing ordinance on the books to continue their enforcement activities and citation activities.
Right.
Right.
And not to interrupt, but, right, for the law that we have on our books, we can cite for, correct? Not the new statute that doesn't allow law enforcement to cite, which it actually, I think, I'll have to reread it again, but I think it prohibits law enforcement from citing. Now, I could be reading that wrong, but, and again, now we're merging two concepts. We're merging already enacted ordinances and towns with state statute, but I don't disagree that we can cite for what we have on the books now, allowing us to cite. But I'm not so sure we can cite above and beyond what the state allows us to do. But that was my only question.
I understand. If you give me a moment, I'll take a look at the bill because that would be appropriate to answer that question right now.
I thought, are we discussing tonight, or are we voting?
We can just table it if you want, until it's clear.
That was my only question. I just wanted to make sure.
We would be happy to bring this back to the next meeting.
Councilman?
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, clearly, everybody seems to be for this, and I would vote for it. I have to admit that I question in my mind the utility of it. How do you enforce something like this? Police going to be driving around, seeing somebody and stopping them? I doubt it. If they have an accident, like we had in this town, where four people were killed, I think it was last year, and I believe the person, although I can't say for certain, I believe the charge was that he was texting, clearly, there are all kinds of charges you can make against him. I would support it, but again, I don't see the utility of it.
Well, maybe one of the things we can do when we bring it back is to show you the effectiveness it has had in other cities and towns and states that have used it, and how their statistics have changed. One of the advantages of hands-free versus texting is that when they're texting, a police officer can't, can't have them show their phone and show that they were texting. So that is almost unenforceable. But the act of having the phone in your hand is very visible, and I don't know whether it is a secondary offense. I think it is a, I think it's a primary offense. It was going to be secondary. So I do believe, and Captain, you're welcome to come up and comment on this, but it seems enforceable to me.
Well, I guess I was specifically talking about texting. Phone up to your ear, you can see.
Right.
But if somebody has a phone down here, and they're driving, and they're texting like this, nobody's going to see it.
Yeah, but if, part of, part of it is the weaving in and out, and that's what the biggest problem is with the distracting driving. So you can get pulled over, obviously, if you're driving recklessly and you're absolutely right. It's, the burden of proof is to demonstrate that they're doing that while they're driving, and that's.
Well, I mean, if I may, Mayor, you know, I'd certainly be interested in seeing the statistics, but more importantly, I'd like to know how they try to enforce it.
Captain.
Yeah, I could speak to that just a little bit. The current ordinance that's on the books in the town of Fountain Hills, the no texting while driving, that's a very difficult one to enforce. It is hard to know if someone is texting. They can, it can look like they are, and their explanation could be they were typing something into their MapQuest. So it's extremely difficult to prove and to force them to show you their phone. You start getting into issues with search and seizure. So the new state law and the way the ordinance will move over to reflect that is a lot easier to identify that observation and whether or not they're hands-free. If they have the phone in their hand, makes it very obvious that there's a violation. So, and it is my understanding it's going to be a primary offense. So, and I can't tell you the number of times where we're driving and you see somebody holding their phone or plugging something in. And before, the way it was existing prior, to pull them over for that, believing they were texting, you didn't have the reasonable suspicion to know that they were. So, you know, it really handcuffed deputies. But in law enforcement, the way it's going to move, where we can now, we can only do warnings from, until 2021, and after that point, then you can do citations for it. Does that answer your question at all?
Sort of.
Okay. Can I clarify it anymore?
No.
Okay. I believe that it's going to be more effective for us to identify the violation and be able to write a citation for it, and make it a lot easier for law enforcement.
Thank you. So I think we will clarify. Thank you for finding that question, because I think you're right, because we, we have both things now, and so that would be the same. We still have to enforce both, but one will be with the warnings, and the other is still the one we have on the books.
And I may be wrong. So I'm just saying, it's the way I was reading it, and I was concerned. So that's why I asked.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
If I may, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
LaCron, we can catch each other afterwards.
Thank you so much. Then the last is the consideration of approving a First Amendment to the IGA with Maricopa County. Did you want to?
Unfortunately, I said in the last meeting, that wasn't unfortunate, but what's unfortunate is I didn't realize this was going to be on the agenda so soon. I have not yet had sufficient time to vet this with my employer, Maricopa County, as an attorney there, and my employment contract with them. Since this is a Maricopa County issue, I just need to make sure that I can go forward and weigh in. So I will just tonight, until I figure out that more specifically as far as the legal ramifications, I will just recuse myself and not be a part of the discussion, but remain in my seat.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is this Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the item before you is a request for a First Amendment to our intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County for the implementation of an administrative fee. Every February of each year, all of the contract cities and towns that contract with MCSO for the provision of law enforcement services are invited over to the sheriff's headquarters, where they hand out individually each of our costs for the upcoming year. And in the past, the way that our contracts have all worked with MCSO for the provision of law enforcement services is that it's based on a cost of service recovery. So basically, what we're paying for next year, or what's proposed for next year, they give those, those numbers in February, and it's based on the prior year of service and costs that they have experienced. When I went to the meeting this year, they kind of shocked a number of us with a 3% fee. They called it an administrative fee, and that they were telling us that the current intergovernmental agreement did not cover the cost for the administrative overhead that was necessary to support the sheriff's law enforcement functions here in town. So that would be like budget, finance, purchasing, risk management, services of that type. They had, they had actually told us that they had gone through an evaluation of their budgets and their services specifically, and they actually had a, if I'm not mistaken, a firm had actually evaluated and had, had these findings and recommendations that they tried to recover this. So that's why, this is before you tonight, is our current intergovernmental agreement, as well as all the other cities and towns that contract with MCSO, do not have these fees built into the base intergovernmental agreement. So in looking at other options, you know, one of the risk analysis that's in the staff report is, you know, staff looked at the possibility of reducing services by the equivalent of about $136,000, which is what this is going to be costing us. But knowing that we have really a need for public safety, particularly law enforcement, it didn't make sense. There's no reason why we'd want to reduce the contract by that amount. We're just really between a rock and a hard place with this fee. So with that, I would recommend that we go ahead and have the council consider the adoption of the resolution, which would implement this at this point.
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been relatively quiet this evening, which I'm sure is a shock to all of you, because I'm known for stirring it up. To me, this is just adding insult to injury. We have a $584,773 increase to the sheriff's department contract, which on that face is outrageous. This is a resort fee. This is anybody in this room that's been to the Marriott or any of the hotels, and you pay your fee, you pay what the room rate is, and then they add that resort fee on, in case you use the internet, in case you dip a toe in the pool, or whatever. I understand what Grady's saying. We're between a rock and a hard place. What are we going to do? Not pay it? I just want to voice extreme concern. It's outrageous that on top of a $584,000 increase, we're going to pay the resort fee. This just goes back to the alarm that I've sounded, that the town, my fellow council members and everybody, has to seriously look into the financial impact that this contract has on us as citizens. And it's just going to go up, folks. It's not going down. It's going to go up. So that's my opinion. Of course, I'm going to vote against it, but it's, it's just outrageous, and it leaves a bad taste in my mouth, and I'm sure it leaves a bad taste in a resident's mouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Magazine?
Grady, just a clarification. Is this on top of the 14% that we've been quoting as the increase for MCSO?
This is part of that. So the fee, I'm sorry, the overall contract went up by almost 11%. So with this 3%, it makes it 14%.
And what are the repercussions if we decided not to support it?
Well, we are in a contract, so it'd be probably a breach of contract, but I'll let the attorney.
If not, well, without giving too much, I mean, termination of the contract would be on the table.
I'm sorry?
Termination of the contract would likely be on the table. Right? I mean, like, they could choose, because we're in a five-year, so we're in a five-year period. We had, it's effective 2012 to 2017. This July 1, 2019, we're in our second year renewal of that contract term. So both parties have to agree to renew it, and the fact of the matter is is that if we came to an impasse to where we couldn't agree, the contract would be over.
Is every jurisdiction paying this 3%?
So, yes. All the towns, such as town of Queen Creek, Carefree, Cave Creek, Guadalupe. I believe Avondale has a small section. So, yes, every community that contracts with the sheriff's office for law enforcement is getting a 3% fee.
So it's a waste of time to try to negotiate it.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So it's going to be 3% every year? I mean, it's not just a one-year?
They made it appear that the 3% would be ongoing from this point forward. Now, the, certainly those costs, you know, just like what we're seeing on the pension and everything else going up, their 3% is built on the 3% of our base budget. So that could be going up considerably every year. But it would still be 3% of the contract.
Grady, any feedback from the other cities and towns, or their councils, in terms of how they're approaching this, or any other?
I can tell you the managers were not very happy, and the, kind of the terminology that Councilmember Spelch used was kind of the terminology that myself and others were using with this. As far as this going on, I have been seeing it's been being adopted and passed in other communities. So I think that most of the other communities realize that there's not a whole lot that they can do. I will tell you, though, most of the other communities did not have any where near the increase we had that was proposed for next year. So some of them had, the only increase they had was a 3%, which was this fee. So, which seemed moderate compared to us.
As I recall, and Craig can correct me on this, but I believe I recall that Craig was saying they were going to, were going to plan probably for 10% increase each year. And part of that was paying back the retire, into the retirement system. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that's absolutely correct.
So now we're talking about at least 13%. Correct?
Yes. Well, if you averaged it over the last two years, this current year, we had a weird anomaly where it only went up by 2/10 of a percent. So if you average it, it's, it was like maybe 7% between the two years.
Starting next year?
Yes, starting next year.
Probably is talking at least 13%. That's outrageous.
Councilman Spelch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So legally, there's absolutely nothing that we can do. As far as, there's no, basically, we can't do anything as a town to file a motion to stop this or do anything.
No, it's purely a matter of contract between the two parties.
All right. Well, if the captain, before he leaves tonight, if you would generate a case report listing all of us as victims of a armed robbery, and listing all the residents of the town, this is just absolutely, positively outrageous.
I want to say a couple of things. First of all, we have a contract. We're not powerless. We have the ability to negotiate. We haven't, we're, we're starting to do that. We've done it before. They have sat and met with us. We can ask. We can ask to change the services. We can make them more community-oriented if we want. We can spend less if we want. We, we're not victims here. We, right now, we're looking at something that is being presented to us in a way that we've never seen it before, which is it's part of the 14% that we've been throwing around all year long. So this isn't really a shock money-wise. It's something that's out in a different way, in a way that is not making us very happy, calling it an administration fee and anticipating it continuing. The other aspect of it, though, has been based on expenses. And we did have an unusual year last year. Now, if you look at the year before, let's just take $4 million. We didn't, it didn't go up at all. If it had gone up the 10% that we were ready for and then 10% again this year that we were ready for, it's over $600,000 more than what we're paying now. It didn't go up last time and it's going up this time on a lesser amount because it didn't go up last time. And next year, we may not have, it's not a never-ending increase because we don't know what the expenses are going to be for the year. Does that mean we don't go in and do our best to negotiate or to tailor this to what we want? But this isn't anything different than we already knew in the budget. It was going up 14%. This is part of it. We don't like the way it sounds. We don't necessarily, it sounds like people aren't really buying the reason for it, but we have the right to negotiate. We're a contract town that, that gives them a lot of, you know, I think that they value us and so, and we value them. And I feel like we have every right to go forward with this and see what the future brings and including what Councilwoman Spelitch mentioned, which is looking at other options and probably doing that for fire, too. So it's all on the table, but this is not any more money than has been in the budget and I, I guess I'll look for a motion unless there's any more discussion.
A quick question, Mayor. You were talking about the contract and when is it up then? Is it, we're in the middle of it or?
Well, so the, so the original five-year period ended and you have the option for five subsequent renewals. This contract, this current renewal period will end June 30, 2019. And this new amendment will be effective July 1, 2019 as part of that next renewal period.
So is the next renewal period another five years?
Nope, next renewal period's one year. So they, so we can re-renew annually for three more years until the contract has to be entirely renegotiated, re-executed.
So that, so that if we go year to year, that buys us a little time to look into some of these options or what have you if we, so we're not tied into a five-year thing right now.
Right now, it's just a year-to-year renewal.
Thank you. I think we have a speaker card.
Yes, Mayor. Bob Shelstrom?
Thank you. I'm Bob Shelstrom from Fountain Hills and I took a look at this contract and called around to the sheriff's office, talked to our own sheriff and everybody else, and there's one overriding question that has a major impact on the price of this. We are taxpayers in Maricopa County. The citizens of Fountain Hills pay taxes separately to the sheriff's office, not including what we're getting as part of this IGA. The legal question for which I could not find an answer from people who should know is what law enforcement services is the town of Fountain Hills entitled to for the taxes we pay outside of this IGA? I took a look at the website for Maricopa County Sheriff's Office and they have a budget of $359 million. We have 4,307,000 people in Maricopa County. That comes to $83 per person we're paying to the sheriff's office on average. With 24,000 or so people in town, that's what, about $1.9 million that we're paying to the sheriff's office from here? We should be entitled to something. Now, what are we entitled to? I was looking through the statutes to see exactly what their responsibilities are for providing law enforcement services throughout the county, and there really isn't, doesn't seem to be one, which is a problem. Or a good thing for negotiation because if it isn't well-defined, you might as well take the position that's in our best benefit. So if we were doing that and taking a look and saying, out of that $1.9 million we pay in Fountain Hills to the sheriff's office, maybe half of it's law enforcement, so we should be entitled to a credit for that of, say, close to $1 million. There's another thing, the only place I was able to define services provided by the sheriff's office was relating to their special units. I know Mr. Spelitch is a former homicide detective and he knows the specialization that's required for that, and it's not fair to expect towns the size of Fountain Hills or smaller to be able to maintain a homicide squad. So they have a homicide squad specifically for the county. I think what is fair, since we had some homicides here, that should be taken as responsibility of the county sheriff's office outside of the IGA. They should be providing that to everybody. If you take that out, I imagine a lot of that $327,000 in overtime that's considered there would go away and not be the basis for this year's charge. They also have vehicular crimes handled by the county, including fatalities, which of course we unfortunately had last year, serious injuries and hit-and-run and traffic collisions involving MCSO offices. I think all the dollars from last year that were spent on that were county expenses, not Fountain Hills. Therefore, it should not be included with our pay for local police. Special Victims Unit, sexual assaults, child abuse.
Sir, we're out of time now.
Okay. Bottom line is, there's a long list of things there that should not be included in the basis that you will be voting on tonight. Those should be excluded. You have reasonable cause to do so and I think you should postpone it until you can get that responsibility on the part of the county established. Thank you.
Thank you. It's clear that, it's clear that information needs to be had from all sources and to everybody. Maricopa County, obviously, cities like Phoenix and Mesa have their own police departments, but their citizens also pay taxes to Maricopa County. So I think we need to have it clear what services that Maricopa County covers, but they don't cover in municipalities. But we just happen to have Maricopa County as our municipal police force. And I don't want to ask the captain to come up here and necessarily address all of these things because there's a lot of detail there and I think we need to obviously come back with something a little...
I think that's fine, but I do want to address a couple of things. One is all the cities that have their own law enforcement, county does not provide anything for them for law enforcement services unless they have a special unit or something like that. So all the mid-sized cities, the Glendales, the Peoria's, the Chandler's, Mesa's, they have full-service law enforcement agencies and, but yet those citizens in all those cities are all paying Maricopa County taxes. And as I had a conversation with Mr. Shelstrom today, the dollars that we all pay to Maricopa County for our property taxes all go to like one big general fund and then they determine how that gets divvied up to the different services. I also explained to him that, and this is good for everybody to know, too, we also have what we call jail raids. So every time we have somebody that gets arrested and has to be arraigned at the Superior Court, they are taken to the county jail and we have daily jail raids. What's the same argument? I mean, you can get into the circular argument that, well, we're paying our taxes, why are we having to pay twice? Same thing with animal control. We have a contract with animal control and we still pay them for their services. A lot of cities provide their own animal control services and their own shelter. So the only thing, you know, I can say is that these are, this is another entity. They do not overlap with the cities that already have their own law enforcement. And in our case, we've chosen to contract with them. And so Mr. Shelstrom, I think, made a really good argument, but at the same time, his argument should be really with the county board supervisors and not really with us tonight with this situation.
Thank you. And one of the things maybe we could come back with, which we have done in the past is kind of a per capita comparison because you did that a couple, not that long ago and we came out well and to make sure that we're doing apples-to-apples kind of thing.
Sure, that's a good idea.
Okay. So in the meantime, this is where we're at. So if somebody would like to say anything else or have, make a motion, I'd appreciate it. Come on. We already did the budget. It's in the budget.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
To get us off the dime, I'm going to, under protest, move approval of this increase.
Thank you.
And I'll go ahead and second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. I think it's five to one.
And I abstain.
I'm sorry? Oh, abstain. Four to one, sorry. Sorry about that. Thank you, Sherri. Okay, last is council discussion direction, town manager, about placing things on future agendas. I think the wall discussion and maybe some of that buffer discussion about the hospital, we could figure out what that was about. And then let's get back with some of these MCSO facts. Anything else you want to ask the town manager to follow up on? No? Okay, motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
Second.
Thank you all in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thanks.